Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, Fair Commission Meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting, December 28, 2020. At this time, the next item on the agenda is the invocation, that is, Commission of Edward Taylor. Mr. Taylor, please lead us through it.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, on this afternoon, I have the young lady that I've been knowing approximately fifty years or better. Better known as my wife, Ms. Bob Jean Taylor. We've been married forty-three years. We have four grandkids and I love her to death because she has put up with me all these years.
Amen.
All right, at this time, I'm going to ask her to come and bless us with the word of prayer.
Tonight we're going to pray this God, in this time, this disciple's to be. Our Father, our Father, we join in heaven. Hallowed be thy name, that kingdom come. Let thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day, Lord, our daily bread, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from all that is seen in you. For that is the kingdom, and the power and the glory, heaven, heaven, and earth. Lord, we come tonight for no formal fashion, for no outside show to the guilty world. But God, we come tonight because we need you. Lord, we live in a time, Lord, and Lord, we need you, Lord, and Lord like never before, in the name of Jesus. Lord, in this city of Douglas, Georgia, we need you tonight, God, in the name of Jesus. We need you to take control over tonight, God, in the name of Jesus. Help on our way tonight, God, in the name of Jesus, not only here, Lord, oh, but everywhere across the land and country. We ask you to look on us tonight, God. We realize, Lord, we're living in trouble sometimes. We need you like never before, in the name of Jesus. Help on our way, God. Touch the minds of your people, God. Touch the hearts of your people, God. We realize, Lord, you'll soon come, sooner than we think, oh, God. In the name of Jesus, we ask you to save here, Lord, and never set somebody free. In the name of Jesus, Lord, I ask you to look on this city council, oh, Lord. Oh, God, help them tonight, God. Lord, to be a one, oh, God, in the name of Jesus. Have your way tonight, God. You take over, God. There's none like you, God. No one can do it like you can, God. In the name of Jesus, Lord, if you would do these things for us, we'd be so thankful, God, to give your name the praise. Lord, the glory and the honor, God shall be now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand if you are able, and I will lead you through the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of order of the agenda. It's been motioned in second. City of Douglas does not require a second, so there's motion on tape. All in favor? Opposed? Your vote, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the second reading of the rezoning of point three, correction, 3.1 acres on West Baker Highway. City manager, correction, that's the city attorney.
Okay, this will be the rezoning of the property over on West Baker Highway. And so all of you will know exactly where it is. It's the Baker property directly behind Bickers Music. The bill ordained by the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia. It is ordained by authorities, same firm, that passed this order, both the Unified Man Development Code of City of Douglas, Georgia, by the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, on February 28, 2011. As amended in compliance plan of City of Douglas, Georgia, by the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, on October 8, 2007. As amended, stands amendment of the laws. Fox Drive track will answer your after-bees on GW Gateway. All that track across the landline situation being in the City of Douglas, Cough County, Georgia, containing 3.181 acres. They're showing all that certain plans of survey by Walter P. Cochrane, dated January, July 10, 2002, according to Black Book 94, page 126, Office of Cough County, Georgia, set flat. If hereby incorporated, here him by reference, there too, as part of this script, for all purposes. This being the same property described in that certain plan of survey prepared by Courtney Ebbett, dated May 13, 1976, according to Black Book 39, page 74, Cough County records, often referenced, the first time of the regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, on December 14, 2020. And referred the second time of the regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners, that property advertising caption is required on the chart, City of Douglas, Georgia, on December 28, 2020. That is the second reading, however, we must conduct a public hearing on this proposed rezoning. If there's anyone here tonight who has a comment on the proposed rezoning of property located on West Baker Highway, please step to the podium, state what your name is, or whatever comment you may have.
Mr. City Attorney, I have something. I'm going to just take my seat, though. I'm going to keep my seat. So what district is this 3.181 acre in?
What district?
Yes, of the commissioners here.
Oh, what commission district?
Yes, sir.
Well, it would be, you know where Bickers Music is, get on Peters Avenue.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm, I think I'm getting Bickers with something, confused with something else. This is not the area down from Amberwood over in my area. We're going the other way.
You wear a flash food, what do you call now, circuit case?
Uh-huh.
Bickers Music is across the street.
Oh, that little small place. Oh, that area, that area, okay.
I saw Baker property.
Okay, yes, I know what you're talking about now. And the gateway will make it do what kind, have what kind of, what would be in the gateway? Is there anything in particular?
Yes, ma'am, you can have retail shops, banks, such as that.
Okay, I had my berries mixed up. Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment on this proposed rezoning? These are ready for action, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much. After the hearing, at this time, I'm going to pay the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda item. As always, our city manager will lead us through this.
Mayor and Council, we have four items tonight coming over on the consent agenda. The first item, I'll read them all for you. First item is item two from the work session, approval of the December 14, 2020 meeting minutes. Item three, approval for the bid for well number four, elevated tank. Item number six, approval of appointment to the airbase preservation and development committee. And item nine, which is approval of the Martin Luther King Motor Cave parade route.
Good to, thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion for the items placed on the consent agenda.
I move to approve.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the work session items for discussion. As always, the city manager will lead us through this.
Okay, we have five items coming over from the work session. Item number one, discussion and review of the November 23, 2020 meeting minutes.
At this time, Commissioner, the Mayor Pro Temp led us off to bring the floor. Your concern?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to rediscuss this and revisit this issue with our commissioners, our commission members here tonight. I'm just asking that we reconsider this. This is the, the item that I have a challenge with on there is the alcohol, beer and wine license for 915, or actually, it's the name change of that. It's already, the beer and wine license is already there, but 915 A, Gaskin Avenue. And I hereby recommend this be approved.
Move to approve. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion.
The chair recognizes Commissioner Dern.
We must rescind the vote for that. And it has to be two-thirds of that majority that vote for. That vote the last time it was passed, to vote against, it has to be two-thirds of that. Which would bring two, three people, 2.6, around about three people, that was in the majority of that vote, to rescind that vote.
Discussion.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes, you would have to get the, have, you would have had to have gotten the item on the agenda, first of all. You can't do it through the minutes. The minutes are to be approved or disapproved based on if there is an error to the minutes. There is no error to the minutes. You want to revisit that item, which according to our Roberts Rules of Order, which we generally abide by, you were to have gotten that onto the agenda, or as an agenda item, the meeting, the very next meeting following the vote, which would have been the last meeting we had. That's what I was trying to explain, that our last meeting, you would have a problem about the minutes. The minutes are not a problem. You want to actually revote the issue. So you were supposed to have gotten on the agenda at the last meeting to revisit that, that vote, which you did not do.
City Attorney, City Manager, I'll ask for y'all's advice on this. And I was under the impression that this can be done, since when we misled that night, and that there were discrepancies with regard to distance and things like that, that this needs to be reconsidered.
This matter is governed by section 2.39 of the City Code, not the charter, the City Code 2.39, which says that before the minutes are approved, a matter can be reconsidered. And it's got to be by a majority vote.
Thank you, okay.
But when something is voted on in its past, you have to rescind the item. We was in this place, I'm a man here, it was two, two years ago, with this same thing, you have to rescind the item. We had an attorney that got in. I will never forget, and it had to be two-thirds of that majority of that vote. And that's three people to rescind it back.
Well, this matter was not approved, and the minutes have not been approved, therefore, 2.39, pull it up and look at it. If they want to reconsider, it can reconsider.
But that item has been voted on.
It sure has.
It was, but the minutes were not approved, so.
But that is not void out, what happened with the vote.
So basically, what I'm hearing is this right here, you have to amend your motion and ask to rescind that vote.
That's right. Okay. I hereby ask that you rescind.
It has to be on the majority that voted for, that voted against.
Right.
Reconsider is what I was under the impression, reconsider, Mayor.
I do not agree that you've got to rescind it, because the minutes have not been approved, you can reconsider.
Okay.
Okay, so I want to make sure we understand what you're saying is the first vote is not valid until the minutes have been approved.
The minutes have not been approved, therefore, the second vote is not considered, is not official yet.
Correct.
So, okay, on this matter, could we please ask the mayor to please step back since this is his property on 915, since we've been a vote on it?
That's up to the mayor.
And then the Mayor Pro Temp take over again.
Actually, I want to say this right here. At no point did I ever think that I was in violation of the conflict of interest rule, at no point. I left my chair primarily for office, in the perception. The charter states that, one, the charter states that in section 2-477, Conflict of Interest, any city official may not participate in a vote or decision on a matter affecting an immediate family member or person or entity. The applicant is not my immediate family. The property is not in question. The issue before the council pertains to licensing, not property. I do not benefit from the applicant receiving the license, whether the applicant has a city or state, has met the city or state requirements. I met with Mr. Jerome Adams. I let him review my contract. The contract is not contingent on whether or not that applicant receives a beer and wine license. So, BOL Leg B, a city official who serves as a corporate officer or a member of a board of directors of a nonprofit entity, must disclose their interest in said entity to the mayor and council prior to participating in a vote or decision regarding funding of the entity by or through the city. That is not applicable, because the individual applicant is not a nonprofit organization. BOL Leg C, where the interest of the city official is subject matter of a vote or decision is remote or incidental, the city official may participate in the vote or the decision and need not to disclose the interest. This is the normal course of business. Mr. City Attorney, did I, did I not hold a discussion with you today?
You did.
Do, am I in conflict of interest according to our charter?
According to the state law and according to the charter, in my opinion, you do not have a conflict of interest, because you do not have a financial interest in the outcome of this matter. You would have to have a financial interest in the outcome of this matter. You showed me the lease you had, the lease was dated some three months prior to this date. It's not contingent on that applicant receiving an alcoholic beverage license. The licensee or the person on the lease is obligated through, I think it's October 21?
October 31, 2021.
So the fact that they have an alcohol beverage license or don't have an alcohol beverage license, makes no difference to you. They're still obligated under the lease, the same lease payments, lease payments don't go up or anything.
So, I will say this right here. I tried to take the high road. I tried to not be involved. During the last commission meeting, it was stated by members of the council that they did not care about our oath. The oath says that we must uphold the city charter, period.
That was not stated.
Yes, well.
No, it wasn't.
So this is what we got. There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor to, to rescind that. Any discussion on that topic?
Okay, I have discussion.
The chair recognizes Commissioner Pearson.
Thank you. You're saying that there is no financial interest on your behalf. But however, if you are the owner, owner of that establishment, and if getting an alcohol license would help to that person who is managing that facility to be able to pay you your monthly rental fee, in my opinion, that is a financial interest.
Okay, duly noted.
In my opinion, it's not only whether or not legally you are having a conflict of interest, but also it is what appears to be. Does the charter speak, and, and Mr. Attorney, does the charter, as well as Code of Ethics, speak in terms of what appears to be?
You can, you can make an argument that there would be an appearance of a conflict of interest, but in this situation, this is a lot like, you know, you all award bids on automobiles, all the time. You're buying vehicles, police cars. Well, if any of you own stock in, say, General Motors or Chrysler, and you accept bids on a Dodge Charger.
We should excuse ourselves from getting those bids.
A Dodge Charger or a pickup truck, well, by virtue of the fact that you own stock in this company, does not disqualify you from accepting those bids.
Yeah, but the appearance of a conflict would.
And I, I, as the mayor, tried to do that. God knows I did. I tried to do that. But the council continually wanted to not uphold the oath that they took. The issues before this council is that the individual, we have another individual in here that is in the same situation. They have met all the prerequisites of the city charter ordinances and the state. We have had a city employee come up here numerous occasions and state this fact, numerous occasions. And yet, the members of the council elect and purposefully decide not to follow the charter, which is in violation of their oath. So my thing is this right, I tried, God knows I tried.
So the city employee that come up here, what are you saying?
I'm saying Mr. Gardner has been before us numerous times. So let me say this right here. I'm sorry for cutting you off, you have the floor, because there is a motion on the floor to rescind. And I'm going to call for that.
No, I'm not rescinding, I'm just asking that we reconsider.
Reconsider.
Okay. And I'd like to make the motion.
Like you just said, I still have the floor.
She has the floor. Mr. Dern, please be respectful.
Well, you, you're saying, you know, what this city council has done and disregarded oath or whatever. But you all failed to recognize and care about, when you all have failed to carry out your oath of office. Lisa, let's I remind you, your oath of office.
You have the floor.
To, to, to Mr. Brandon Paul, as a city employee. Oath of office to Mr. Britt Leverett, as a city employee. Oath of office to Ms. Joanne Robertson, as a city employee. And I could, I could name more. Oath of office for Greg Nugent. Greg Nugent and Britt Leverett were taken to jail from their job. They were not told that they have a right to not speak with law enforcement. City of Douglas Police Department, who questioned them without advising them of their right to legal attorney. So let's not go about, talking about oath of office, what, what we have sworn to.
Okay.
The people came out to a public hearing from that community and stated how you went on record with some news media, saying that up there in that area, there's illegal drinking, there's, there's illegal gambling, there's underage drinking, there's all kind of problems. But now, because you stand to benefit financially, and you do, you want to bring in alcohol to that area. The same area that you went on the news media complaining about. And the people have came out and spoken. And we heard those people. We heard those people that night who don't want alcohol up there, and we voted accordingly. It's not about a oath of office. It was not about that, and no commissioner up here said that they didn't care about their oath of office. That is a lie, a blatant lie. Nobody said that.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor, your comments?
I don't have any right now, Mayor.
Because. Oh, I'm sorry.
Because right now, we back them too. And when he comes out and votes on.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Temp, you the one making the motion. Do you have any comments?
No comment.
Mr. Moore, do you have any comments? Mr. Gow, do you have any comments?
I'll simply read section 2-39, which is a motion to reconsider matters of previous meetings. Everybody knows what we're talking about. Before the meet, before the minutes of any preceding meeting of the Board of Commissioners are confirmed, any member may move to reconsider any question, motion, resolution, or other matter or thing contained in the minutes of such previous meeting. And if such reconsideration is voted by a majority of the members present, the subject matter of such reconsideration shall be first business in order of disposition.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Dern.
It's reconsidered, they voted for it, I remember the last time, about two years ago. When we was in this case, and we got called, and this one got called, that one got called. And it was at the next meeting, and we go back and look at the meetings, they rescinded the votes, which was in the majority, and they went forth with that vote. But I didn't, I did not say that we don't take the office serious, because first of all, that vote, you wasn't even in there. You was on the outside. Instead of the vote, my community came out, and they pleaded their heart cry. You throw bullets at those same people. And told you, this what you pick up every, every, every time, Mr. Gow. They even came, I guess how movement came down here with quarters, telling me that it's no crime that was going on down there, and they showed every individual, every individual that was in there, every commissioner that was in here. They came in here with signs saying that it was no, no crime done. The things that you were saying, underage drinking, all of that going on. But it's, but it's, it's to be put in our community. It's to be put in our community. And even, even one of the ones said that, one of the councilmen said that, they took one of the people that was there and saying that, that they put behind their church, and all this and that. Said that they gave them cowtips. Before cowtips, it was a judge's piece to them. And they had one, waiting for what, I think that was for eating, got enough. So they're going to get a name in church, get named, he was good. But our community came out, and they made their heart cry. And it would be a dish respect to our community if you go forth with that. Because they made their hearts, their hearts cry. But I can tell you, and I will, I promise you, after this meeting, I will be on the agenda for every meeting about this, about this matter.
Agreed. Any other comments?
And in terms of Commissioner Gow saying previous meeting, so this isn't the previous meeting.
It's not a previous.
So. This isn't the previous meeting. You should have done it at the last meeting, and you failed to do it. So you are out of order.
Commissioner Pearson.
You're out of order.
You've stated, and you've had your time to speak.
Okay, I, I'm not limited to my time to speak, sir.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'm not limited.
Stand. Would you restate your motion, please?
Okay, I would like to ask that the mayor and the council reconsider this item. And we have to, my understanding is we have to take a vote to reconsider it. So I make a motion that we reconsider.
There's motion on the floor, we've already had the discussion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Moore? All in, all.
Oppose, oppose.
Hold. Motion carries.
This is not a previous meeting. You're out of order.
Commissioner Taylor didn't vote.
Mr. Taylor?
Could we hear Mr. Taylor?
To rescind?
I thought you both undecided.
Undecided. Actually, when someone abstains, it actually gets counted as a no. So the next item is, since that's the first order of business, Mayor Pro Temp, you state your motion.
Okay, my motion is to approve the beer and wine license at 915 A, Gaskin Avenue, based on the fact that due diligence has been done in all areas of measurements, and that our city police chief has done what he needs to do, and the fact that code enforcement has done what they need to do. And we want to adhere to our code and our, and our oath of office here in approving this. So my motion is to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion?
Discussion.
The floor, the chair recognizes Commissioner Pearson.
This is not the meeting that this is supposed to be brought up. The previous meeting would have been the last meeting. You are out of order. Commissioner McNeil?
It was brought up at the last meeting.
You are, I don't care. It was brought up the meeting before then. So you should have gotten on the agenda at the last meeting. Yes, you should have. Yes, you should have, to make it the previous meeting.
Correct.
You're out of order.
Any preceding meeting.
You are out of order. No, it does not say any previous meeting. That's not what it says.
That's exactly what it says. Any preceding meeting.
Commissioner Gow, the chair has recognized Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Pearson, please.
I, I've said what I had to say. They're, they're, they're out of order to reconsider this issue. It was supposed to have been brought last meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor, do you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Mayor Proton, you made the motion. Mr. Moore, do you have any, uh, comments? Mr. Gow, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Commissioner Durham, do you have any comments?
I got previous, previous statement. The people came out, and the people stated their hearts. And we sat up here, myself, Commissioner Gow, Commissioner Pearson, we sat here, and it's no, I bet you it's wrong, whatever. And Commissioner Taylor?
Taylor.
We sat here, and we said, and we listened to what the people said, and we voted. Therefore, someone has come and dictated. I'm just going to lie there.
Okay.
And that's a disjustice to the people and the community. And that's all I have to say. Because at the end of the day, I know our community don't think that. We got thousands of little stuff as well. But right there on the George Washington Club, which I'm assuming, I guarantee you, not eight percent of this, this, this mayor commission don't even go to the George Washington Club. I have to sit there, throw it next to me up there. You may have ten first privates downtown with the merch, or something, or whatever. But you have to sit down there. But it's okay, it's okay. Go and put it in the community. Go put it in the community.
No, it ain't.
Let them show what they say, you think no more bullets, let them put up no bullets.
No comments.
Let them put up no bullets. But the blood is gonna be on somebody's hands. The blood is gonna be on somebody's hands. We say, I'm A.J. Franklin, went to Fox News and out there and said that about our people. But then at the end of the day, y'all wanna reconsider something that the people came and told you about. That's wrong. And I'm in there, but the blood gonna be on somebody's hands. And Ms. McNeil, you can reconsider all their home. And you can say what you want to say, but those are our people. Those are our people, they came out. You call us people, you people.
You people, that's what she said.
And I'm gonna be that people today. When I say these three thousand citizens voted me in, my people, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to them, because that is our community. And if I did that out there, disgrace to my community. And that's me, all they sell, whatever. Put it there. You ain't gotta ride by it every day. You ain't got to deal with it. You ain't got to live around it. Who ain't got to live around it? It's ours that's dying every day. Just like you said about a mask. I done lost fifteen, I think, I done lost fifteen people that are connected to me due to COVID. These people don't wanna take it serious, but till it knock on your door, till it comes to your home, it's a problem. But go and put it there. Go and put it there, I don't respect, I, I mean. Then you talk about the minutes. Then Commissioner Pearson was talking about minutes for the longest, and y'all still voted minutes that was not even right.
A blatant lie.
But then you don't wanna say consider. You should have said from the start that you want to rescind your vote. We don't wait three minutes, it's the third minute. But put it in our community. And I tell you, thank you. Put it in our community, because those people are millions. I represent those people. You represent those people, Mayor Proton. Commissioner Pearson represent those people. Not Commissioner Gow, not Commissioner, uh, Moore, and not Commissioner McNeil. Because the golf club is your area.
Yeah, those one up out there.
I'm telling you right, but it's okay, put it there. Put it there. I give.
Yep.
I'm gonna add this. It's sad when a dollar bill has more value than people lives. Just this past Saturday, we saw two young people get killed. I heard drinking was involved. Ran into a tree, the car exploded. Yeah, 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 because one of, one of them can you, one of them can you. And you should.
Let's be respectful to the families, this is Fred.
And my prayers go out to them. But when we sit up here and we make rules because a dollar bill matters more than their life, it all hit real close to home to you, brother. It hits real close to home to me. Because my son was drinking the night of his accident when he got killed at twenty years old. And these young people were twenty-three and thirty-three, or twenty-nine and thirty-three, whatever. Because I was thinking hard this weekend after that. I say, I don't think I'm gonna vote on another passing of an alcohol at, at anywhere. Because, uh, I, I, our young people, they can't handle it. Now I'm done.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Oppose.
Oppose. Motion carries. I vote four. Say again, Mr. Taylor?
Undecided.
Undecided. Motion carries, uh, four, two, uh, one, abstain. Abstain. Good deal. Next item on the, uh, agenda, Mr. City Manager.
Next item is the same item as just discussed, approval of the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty, um, minutes with the amended motion to reconsider, um, addition to it.
At this time, I entertain a motion.
It's approved.
It's been motioned second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Oppose.
Commissioner Taylor? All right. Say again? Um, which one are we on now?
On about the minutes.
The minutes. I agree. Okay, motion carries. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
Next item is item four, uh, we bring forward the first reading of the request to rezone property at fifteen oh five East Ward Street, Randall Park.
Mr. City Manager, are we, are we good?
Yeah, this will be the first reading. The old name by the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, as you brought it down, were named by authority, same farm, that passed this vote, maybe unified land development, because of City of Douglas, Georgia, by the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, on February twenty-eighth, twenty-eleven, as amended the comprehensive plan, City of Douglas, Georgia, by the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, on October eighth, two thousand seven, as amended, stands to meet the fall. Vice track, Manchester, Jack, and B. Song Gateway, all that track and parcel ran line being City of Douglas, Scott County, Georgia, being more takes drive four to a flat of West Island subdivision prepared by Ruth Johnson. Date of May nineteen fifty-four, and before the flat booked two, based three seventy-five, north of Portview, Florida, Scott County, Georgia, the fall, beginning at the northeast corner of the intersection, right away of Georgia Highway thirty-two and Plant Street, the Shawnee and Flat, this east along the north boundary line of Georgia State Highway thirty-two, a distance one hundred forty feet, this north at Liding, uh, said highway, a distance one hundred twenty feet, this west parallel with the right away of a distance one hundred forty feet to the east boundary line, and Plant Street, a distance of one hundred twenty feet, from the beginning, said track and land, having located there on a building of concrete, concrete block construction, off the rest for the first time, the reg meeting, Mayor Board of Commissioners on December twentieth, twenty twenty. And we'll have the second reading and public hearing at our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Next item?
All right, next item will be for the first reading for the annexation and rezoning of the eighty point, um, one, three acres on Thompson Drive.
All right, this will be the first reading, we'll have the second reading this January eleventh. At this time, we will also have. The old name by the Mayor Board of Commissioners, the City of Douglas, Georgia, needed to be moved by a name by authority, same farm, after the fake day, this order is filed about the area contiguous to the City of Douglas, Georgia, as hereby annexed into it, made a part of the City of Douglas, Georgia, putting application of the owners. The area contiguous to the City of Douglas, Georgia, described in Exhibit A, tracks one and two, Douglas, Scott County Industrial Authority, hereby annexed into the City of Douglas, and made a part of the city. The area described as Exhibit A, tracks one and two, Douglas, Scott County Industrial Authority, shall here have to be zoned M two industrial. City clerk of the City of Douglas, instructed to send certified copy of this order together with map, complete survey. By competent survey of the area annexed into the public, Chief of Affairs, Director of Election Division, Secretary of State of Georgia, into the building authority, Scott County, in thirty days after effective date of annexation set forth below. All orders, the project orders, is in conflict with this order's appeal. This order shall become effective on the eleventh day of July, uh, January twenty twenty, often read for the first time, the reg meeting, Mayor Board of Commissioners, of City of Douglas, Georgia, on December twenty-eight, twenty twenty. We'll have that again on, uh, January eleventh.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, next item?
Next item from the work session is item seven, found on page fifty-four. Uh, discuss and seek approval of the Seymour contract amendment number six, city hall renovation and expansion. Uh, here tonight to ask for approval of the contract, uh, for the amendment for, to approve the Seymour Harper and Lewis joint venture guarantee maximum price for amendment number six, city hall renovations and expansions in the amount of four million, six hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred dollars.
At this time, I entertain a motion. It's been motioned second, any further discussion?
Discussion, as I stated.
The chair recognizes Commissioner Pearson.
As I stated at the last meeting, uh, there has been a twenty-plus million dollar project awarded to, uh, Harper Lewis contractors. Of that twenty-plus million dollars, as I asked the city manager at the last meeting, not one cent has been awarded to any minority contractors. I have a problem with that, and I expressed that at that last meeting. Women contractors, black contractors, subcontractors, nobody else has been included to get part of that. I object to it, the last meeting, it did not pass. And earlier in the work session tonight, I asked for documentation that shows me that this project should not be rebid. So when I get something that shows that according to the purchasing policy, then I'll be apt to vote differently, but in the meantime, I stand with what I said at the last meeting. And that's our position to this. Thank you.
Thank you, for your comments. Commissioner Taylor, any comments?
No comment.
Mayor Proton, any comments? Mr. Moore, any comments? Mr. Gow, any comments?
No.
Commissioner Durham, any comments? There are no comments. Um, there's a motion on the floor, all in favor to approve?
Aye.
All right, aye. All opposed?
Oppose.
Motion carries. Mr. City Manager, next item on the agenda.
Next item is item eight from the, uh, work session, found on page, um, one thirty-nine. Uh, discuss and seek approval for the alcoholic beverage license for the Jet Food Stores in Georgia Incorporated to be Roger Goddard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Jet Foods Stores of Georgia Incorporated has made applications for an alcoholic beverage license for beer and wine for retail sales, all premise consumption, located at eight fifty-five Southwest Bowens Mill Road. It's an intersection of West Baker Highway and, uh, Bowens Mill Road. They meet, the manager will be April Wells. She completes all the applications as by city ordinance and the distance requirements set by state law and city ordinance has possibly been met.
At this time, I entertain a motion.
Second.
It's been motioned second, any further discussion?
As I stated at the, uh, previous meeting, uh, when I voted against the last alcohol license, I, I cannot support this. Uh, it's too close to the school right there, and I just can't support it.
Any other comments? Commissioner Taylor, any comments?
No.
Mayor Proton, any comments? Commissioner Moore, any comments? Commissioner Gow, any comments?
No.
Commissioner Durham, any comments? There are no other comments, there's a motion on the floor, all in favor of the approval?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Oppose.
Commissioner Taylor?
Oppose.
Oppose. That's three, three. I voted favor, motion carries. Mr. City Manager, next item on the agenda.
That's all the items from the work session.
That's all the items from the work session. Do we have any staff comments?
No.
No staff comments, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, sir, no, sir.
Say again?
No, sir, I have something. Mrs. Charlie Davis, I asked a couple of meetings ago for a line item of the monies from, uh, the state of, of whomever regarding the COVID money. Have you gotten that prepared?
There is no line item for, for the, it's just a reimbursement for, for the public safety.
Do you have something showing how the money was spent?
Yes, I can have it.
And you're saying it's not a line item, it doesn't show each line that? How is it not a line item?
It's a reimbursement.
It's a reimbursement for all public safety expenditures.
Okay, so it has the total amount that you got, right, the city gal?
Yes.
On that, can you show me how the money was dispersed to the public safety department?
It wasn't dispersed, it was reimbursed.
Oh, how it was reimbursed?
Yes.
You can show how it was reimbursed?
Yes, ma'am.
Where the public safety department had spent X number of dollars.
Correct, yes, I'll give you the documentation that we sent to the state.
Oh, okay, okay, when will you have that?
First thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Did you, did you email that off some, you was, because you said the last meeting about you giving that to us, and the man said that off some, at our last.
At last meeting, and we hadn't gotten it.
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor of the adjourn?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Motion carries. We stand to adjourn.